Here.
Here. President.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Item C, approval of the agenda. You've all read the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved. Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the agenda. If not, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item two, presentations. Item A under number two, student staff and community recognition. We don't have anything this month, so we'll proceed. Item B, the annual health office report. And here comes Nurse Leah Foley. Just in time. You're up whenever you're ready.
Perfect, okay. Hello, everyone. Paperwork printed off here. Um, let's see, are we up? All right, did everyone have a chance to look this over? I'll just hit on a couple of points. This year, we had two of us instead of three of us in the health office, myself and Kimberly Nyhagen. She, um, that role was previously a full-time role and now is a five and a half hours a day. That was decreased due to COVID funding. So it used to be, when it was full-time at the elementary school, it was funded by COVID money. And now we're back to the five and a half hours of health aide position. I have her as a district health aide because that, um, really allows me to use her wherever she's needed. So she does sometimes pop in at the middle school if I'm not able to get over there. And then helps out kind of everywhere if there's an emergency. This is a decrease in hours by 675 total hours for the year of support in the health office in comparison to the previous year. Our director of people services is now part-time, so that also kind of affects our hours and leads to a few more administrative things that I have a little less support on, including staff training. So I've kind of taken over some of that. And these are our office staff who really have taken the brunt of the decrease in staffing because they're responsible to do some triaging for healthcare needs. Definition responsibilities, you guys can look that over. Probably have communicable diseases. Just a reminder, we did, this is, a lot of what address is addressed in communicable disease is COVID, which now we are reviewing yearly in the Safe at School Plan before the school year starts. So I think that's probably on the list to look at in August. Immunization compliance, last year, we did meet the state requirement of getting 99%. We got 99.1%, up from 96.8%, which is a really good thing because I don't have to get as strict. But this year, there are significant changes in immunization requirements for seventh and 12th graders, which will significantly affect that number. So we'll have to do some tracking down of students and their immunization records this year. You guys can, there's a link if you would like to look at those. Any questions on the immunization changes? We did quite a few screenings this year. As you can see, hearing screening was a little different because of the effectiveness of it. I think it's better to screen in the classroom with teachers. It takes a long time to do an accurate hearing screen. So to give more time to the kids that have raised concern with teachers, I think is more effective. And we, we did get about the same number of hearing referrals this year with screening a few less and just the ones that were of higher, the kids who were of higher concern. So about four hearing referrals. We had 50 vision referrals and six confirmed kids who got glasses because of that, which is really significant in, in the mind of a teacher who has a kid who can't see and then now they can. The Lions Club gets a lot of credit for that and they do, they have helped repair or replace at least five pairs of glasses this year and funded that. So I'm very grateful to them. Dental program is another program we can be grateful for. North Lakes has spent $23,000 on us this year and our kids in dental hygiene. That is sealants and fluoride varnishes. Some big numbers to look at of our, our number of visits. And you can kind of see, this year, we tracked 2,991 visits at the elementary school in comparison to 1,729 last year. I think that I try to mark everybody who comes into the room and Kimberly does too. And we try to keep track of where those kids are at all times. So this is what that kind of reflects as, as best as we can. Lots of kids with medications. You can see at the elementary school, there are 17 in comparison to 11 last year. So there's, it was a big year in the health office for not, for going down in hours. We, I feel like we've gone up in busyness and medications. Let's see. Medication passes in the district, which means like a period of time where a student comes to the office to get a scheduled medication or a PRN, ibuprofen or Tylenol. So there were almost 40 daily kids coming to the health office for medicine, whether it's for a headache, migraines, attention medication. But it's, it's a lot of meds that we manage. Each medication that is given has had to been approved, if it's PRN, by parents. And that happens at the beginning of the year. But any scheduled medication, I have to have doctor's orders. I have to have parent's signatures. I have to track it and I have to count it and I have to enter it into the system. So one medication pass might seem like a small thing, but it's actually a lot of work to get that into the system and be able to manage medications in the health office. This page kind of addresses health plans. Any kid with, kiddo with a health condition that's ongoing should have a health plan. We've got about 37 significant ones that we are managing. In addition to some of the astmas that have, kids who have inhalers and could have an, an emergency situation arise, we have emergency action plans for them that are given and directed by physicians and parents. And then we make sure and enter it in the system as well. And four kiddos with diabetes care plans, who a couple now have 504 plans as well. And then we get into wellness. So here's our team, myself, Jeremy, Tiffany and Carrie Bush, and then Melanie Melgarde from our food services. We've really focused on looking at the policy, which I'll talk about a little later. We, the policy is directed mostly by DPI standards. Our wellness policy, it, it really is physical activity and nutrition based and really wants schools to be promoting those two things. So the previous year, we did a lot of, obviously, those are intertwined with many things in life. So the previous year, we looked at sleep and how sleep can contribute to nutrition as well as physical activity. And all those things make us better and well, right? So this year, we wanted to really hone in on the policy, make sure we were following it. Nutrition, we looked at that, had Melanie give us some specifics. She's doing a great job with the standards that she has. She has very strict standards. And then we also really focused on staff wellness, making sure our staff were getting a few extra things that I think in any job, you really want to have a few extras that are benefits in a, a small way. So we had staff wellness programs, usually monthly, at least every other month where they could do fitness activities and turn it in for a prize at the end of the month. We kind of competed between schools a few times and had some healthy snacks provided for the middle school, who usually won our physical activity challenges. But I think it was a good year. We also implemented some yoga classes that are still ongoing this summer, which I think is a good option for some of our staff here. So any questions on that?
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah. And I'd like to thank again the Lions Club for their participation and their support. That's important. Appreciate that from the community. Thanks. Might as well stay there because the next thing on the agenda is your wellness policy.
So in looking at wellness this year with the team, a couple of items were, um, I think need to be addressed so that we can be following our policy. The foods offered and provided but not sold section previously said, "All foods offered on the school campus shall meet or exceed the USDA smart snacks in school nutrition standards, including those provided at celebrations and parties and classroom snacks brought in by staff or family members." So I don't know if, has anybody looked at the smart snacks calculator that's presented by the USDA? Well, sometime you should probably all just put your snacks into that calculator and see if any of them actually should be eaten in the school because it's amazing how many Gatorades have too much sugar. Really, most of the things that we eat that come in a package are too salty. According to that calculator, have too many fats and have too, I guarantee you that no cupcake or even buttered popcorn that comes into the classroom for a celebration meets that calculator. So in order to encourage wellness and also at the same time meet our policy, I would like to reword that to say, "When foods are offered to students during the school day, the district encourages foods to meet, encourages foods to meet the USDA smart snacks in school nutrition standards." And we promote non-food celebrations. Information on how to meet the USDA standards is available through the Department of Public Instruction website. So this just really covers us in saying that when kids bring in those cupcakes, it's okay. We're going to celebrate, we're going to celebrate their birthday and we can have cupcakes for their birthday, but it's not going against our policy. So that's the one section. And then, um, under the wellness section, we are just cleaning up the wording. It, it really says the same thing. So instead of, "The district will implement the following activities below and having an organized wellness program shall be available." We're just combining all that together to say, it's kind of hard to read here, but, "An organized wellness program shall be available to all staff to promote healthy eating and physical activity." Those were the two little tweaks that I think are small but important. Any questions?
Questions from the board? If not, we will receive and place on file your office report. And then as far as this district wellness policy, do we have a consensus to move this to the first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item D, discuss hockey facility agreement with SEIA. Mr. Lucius, he's not here.
No, Mr. Lucius here. Yeah, so.
Did everybody get a chance to look that over?
Yes.
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 Any questions on it? From what you can see, what we have on board docs here?
Nope.
After the board takes, after the board receives this tonight, then it will go on, it'll be publicly available on board docs, but probably tomorrow, Jesse?
Okay, quickly, it's a two-year agreement, the same cost that we paid this past year, so it looks reasonable.
And Michelle, I'm joining, I'll pay part of it.
Yeah, so right now, um, we're looking for consensus to move this to board action for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Approval?
Yes.
Very good. That's what will happen. Item E, discuss Wisconsin WIAA membership renewal. And that's Mr. Lucius too.
Yeah, I, I can take that one. So, um, this is an annual renewal that member districts, boards are asked to take action on. No change. The fees continue to be the same that they've been for quite some time now, which is they're not collecting member dues. The only change that I would say is the process and how they're filed. Those that have been on the board for a while, remember that that was a hard copy document that the board president signed. And now, once approved, it is an electronic signature.
Any questions so far in that? If not, do we have consensus to move that to the board meeting for later in the month?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move that on for next meeting. Item F, discuss 2425 academic standards. Dr. Aslan?
I'll take that one again. An annual requirement. So all, all Wisconsin school districts will be taking action on this in the month of July as, as required. There's no change from last year. So what, what you see in board docs, that the, the four core areas are the district standards. No change from last year. We recommend that the board endorse those for this year. And of course, those are all available for anybody to read on the district website.
Questions? Do we have a consensus to move this to the board meeting in the end of the month?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so move, that's what we'll do. Item G, discuss the NBSC fence proposal. Ms. Landry here? There she is.
Um, I think all of you have a copy of my proposal that's written up. Basically, this proposal just states that up in soccer fields on the hill, we are hoping to build a more permanent fence. Currently, right now, there is just metal posts that we have been putting orange snow removal fencing around to protect the balls from going down the hill and kind of keeping a more safe area where the kids know where they're allowed to be during soccer practice and where they are not allowed to be. LP out of Hayward is donating the materials to us upon approval from the board. So we are basically just asking the school board to approve us building the fence on the property. It would be the same length that the metal posts already are. And it would be about, I want to say, five feet hall, five feet tall with plywood board. It'd be just wood, finished and treated wood. And then in the second half of the proposal, I am also asking that the board approve us to allow for sponsorships. We want to have local businesses kind of like provide us a sponsor. And then how we would recognize those businesses that are providing us a sponsor is by vinyl signs. And we would hang those signs on our fence facing the parking lot during our season. And then we can take them down when soccer is not in season. Kind of similar to what the football team, sports teams do on the track and things like that.
Anything else?
Not really. Those are just the two main things that we're asking.
Any questions for Ms. Landry? I have one. I know we don't, we don't have a policy really right now for advertising on school. Doesn't mean we can't do it. Just to be setting a precedent if we start doing that. So something to think about.
We do, I, I think we do do it.
We do it for football.
Oh, we, we do, but those are school, those are school activities.
These are for business.
That, that's, that's what's different. So these are.
And a school sponsor.
Correct. Yes.
So could we have it added in the proposal that they would follow the same guidelines for sponsorships? That we just have that added in the proposal, that they would have to follow the same policies? So that it's consistent? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can definitely amend the proposal to follow that policy.
That's the only change I would recommend.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Terry.
Just curious about the maintenance of the fencing once it's installed. Is that going to be?
Yep, that would be on the club. Yeah. As of right now, I think we maintain that field. The only thing we don't do for that field is MOW, which is the maintenance out of the school. But as for all of the painted lines that are up there for the fields, that is fully NBSC. We have the painter, we buy the paint. The two sheds that are up on the field are owned by NBSC. So those are ours as well. That's, yeah, it's been a longstanding thing that we're allowed to use the field. I know the school gets first choice, so say, if Coach Merk brings his high school boys or girls up there, they get the field before we do. But we usually just, we work well with the high school soccer team and try to coordinate around them and we've never had a problem, so.
Can I jump in here?
Yeah.
Yep, and I, so I did have the opportunity to connect with Mr. Bradney and he said, "Not a problem" in terms of the, the maintenance that they do up there, so.
Any further questions? If not, do we have a consensus to move this to the board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What a great opportunity. Thank you, guys.
Item H, discuss the second reading of volume 32, number two, Neola policy updates, group three. Do we have any discussion on this? If not, do we have a consensus to move this to the board meeting at the end of the month for action?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody in agreement down here? We will do that. Moving on, number I, eight, number, item I, discuss the first reading of volume 33, number one, Neola policy updates, group one. Any questions on that?
Um, I have a question, just because I'm being new on the board. Because every month now, we keep getting these new policies. So just, is this an ongoing process? And then who decides like which policies Neola is going through to review at that time?
Well, as far as I know, it's the, the lawyers in Neola who update these policies. Now, Dr. Aslan, do you have anything to add on that?
Yep, so they release updates, Neola releases updates semi-annually.
So they're going through all of them at that time or they're just, it depends on what's going on?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, I guess I would like to ask us as a board to have Neola review our policy for board policy 31112 and board policy 4112. And that has to do with communication between board members and staff. And I'm, it's not like I'm in a hurry for it, but I'd like to see that done before the start of the school year.
Which one is that now?
It's board policy, it's not on the documents here tonight.
Oh, okay.
I'm just asking that board policy 3112 and board policy 4112. Just asking at some point to, for them to have that added to our agenda.
Well, as far as acting on that tonight, it's not on our agenda, so we can't really act on it. But, but I'll take that into account. We can pursue that in a later meeting.
Yeah, that's all I was asking for.
Yeah, no problem. Take a look at that.
Put that on next month's meeting or?
I don't know why not.
That would, we would need to if we're to do it before school starts.
Yep. We'll add that to the agenda then for the end of the month.
Thank you.
Just to review that. And what you're asking for is Neola to address those or do you want them changed?
Well, I'd like to address it as a board, so you can just.
Just, okay, address the policy and then discuss the policy and then act on it?
Yes.
Okay.
So with the policies that we have, policy 5517, this almost entire policy is written for individuals, but we are now adding our group of students. Just, what's the definition? What defines, what defines that?
It's a good question. I, I can't answer that for sure.
Because.
Without seeking Neola's advice here.
I think that that's complicating this student anti-harassment. There should be no harassment for any kid, person, student, staff, whatever. But when you start going groups of people, who determines then? I mean, that gets into some fuzzy things. And so my concern is with that addition to that policy. So I'm going to see the Neola rep, Jesse and I will see the Neola rep later this week. So can you be more specific about what your question is on that? Because we'll try to get some clarification quickly here. What I, what I believe is when you just strike that, we're still addressing the issue of anti-bullying harassment. This one is anti-harassment. I don't, it, it's already addressed as individuals. Anybody who's harassing, they're going to investigate. We start using group of students, that starts getting into some, you, you're starting, that's, what's the definition? It's not defined. That's begins to get.
It's on the first page.
To me, it just gets tricky. I.
It already says students. And so you're saying there's no difference between a group of students and students.
I don't know why we're, why are we adding that when it addresses it clearly in this entire policy? I'm doing, I'm just going to, I mean, next, if we move this on, I'm just going to ask that we strike that from this policy.
Are you talking about the very first highlighted portion?
It goes throughout.
Okay, so it would just say student or group or, or group of students is what it should be then? Gram, grammarly maybe?
No, it just says additionally, "The board prohibits harassing behavior directed at students."
Or a group of students. But you, yeah, I mean, you could read it either way. I mean, you could.
I'm saying it already currently says that though.
Yeah.
So he's saying you just struck the addition.
What does group of students mean?
Gotcha.
And so when we get to, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm going to move to strike that. And we move it as is, directed at students. You, you, you put out any fuzzy math, any gray areas. I, I think that just clouds the whole thing. If, it's clear, if there's an individual who is harassing, they get investigated, it gets taken care of. Whenever you get to groups of people, things get a little weird. And so I'll, I'm just, that's just my opinion and I just wanted to raise that so you're aware of it.
Maybe if Dr. Aslan, if you would talk to, we have a new Neola rep apparently. If you talk to them and ask them what they mean by group of students and why that's in there, then we can get an answer and discuss that at.
I will do that.
Meeting when we vote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Get some clarification from Neola before we act on this.
It's the first reading, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody good with that?
Yes.
Sure.
Any other questions on this policy or any of the policies that are?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
The policy 0100, I think it's just a typo, but I, I could be wrong. Towards the end, it's got the definition of treasure. And it says the chief financial officer of the board and then it says bylaw and it says treasurer. And it says the same for the vice president, using the same. So I don't know if that's, you see that, Jessica?
Right.
I don't know if there's supposed to be a different definition there for vice president or if I'm just reading that incorrectly.
Well, since we, since we don't have a vice president per se, do we? I mean, we do, but it's like.
Mr. Nathaniel Milton is the board vice president.
Well, they both say the bylaw here.
What I mean, what I mean though is it's, it's the same.
You're not here, I guess.
Definition for both the treasurer and the vice president, so.
But it isn't supposed to be, I don't believe.
I don't think.
Yeah.
No.
I think they.
I just think it's a typo. I think they just.
Yes. I think they just copy and paste it.
Yeah, I think it's a clerical error, yeah.
Either that or you can have it for either one.
I don't know. I was just asking.
It's up to the board which one has, which one we want, I guess.
I mean, there are two separate positions, so it should be two separate definitions, yeah.
And then, uh, second question on 5610. It looks like we're wanting to remove guardian.
This is for suspension and expulsion.
Yeah, it's, it had, you know, parents and guardian. And I just wondered if there's a reason why we'd be removing guardian because it, it seems like in our community, there's, there are several students that have a guardian rather than a parent. And so I, I don't, there could be a good reason for it. I just, I don't know. So I'm asking.
I, yeah, I agree it should be guardian, period, because it would not necessarily be parent. We can't define, we shouldn't limit it to.
Perhaps strike parent and not guardian.
Well, I don't know why you strike it. I don't know why we're, we're striking this. It says administration and the student's parents or guardian seems correct to me, but I, I might not be aware of something, why we're removing, why we're moving guardian. Because that would limit somebody that's a guardian then to build a.
So they don't have a parent who is with them.
You could add legal guardian.
That would cover all bases.
So it's a parent or legal guardian. So it's a parent or legal guardian. And that would then cover somebody who's under some, a legal guardian in the case.
I think, why don't we, why don't we have the Neola rep explain this also to Dr. Asland and then we can discuss this at the next meeting and act on it.
It should be legal.
We'll get a definition of, or why, we'll get a reason for why they're crossing out or guardian and get a defined answer on that. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then just a couple more. Um, with the policy sixty-six, ten and sixty-six, eleven. It seems like we're removing sixty-six, ten completely and starting over. And within sixty-six, eleven, um, just talking about when like seniors graduate. The changes that the principal, um, would, if they had any, say, leftover monies in their account, at least the way I'm reading it, then the principal. Our superintendent would decide where that money goes to. And in the past, I believe the seniors had a certain amount of time they could, they could give it towards, uh. You know, come up with a, a choice. They bought a plaque or something or did something in honor of somebody else. So I, I guess I'm asking why that's being done. The purpose behind that, not giving them a chance to.
In the past, they've taken it with them and they put it into a bank account and the class took care of it at that point.
Again, there could be a good reason for this. That's why I'm just asking.
So I can, I can take that one.
Have that on the list too.
Well, I, I think I can field that one right now. So, um, as Mrs. Jepson had indicated, um, you know, that money's turned over to the class. So, um, you know, what these policy swaps do is not allow accounts for non-school groups. And when they're seniors, they're not, they're not in school anymore. So the money would be turned over to them and they would determine. And if they're going to put it in a bank account or buy something, whatever.
They get it.
They get it. Yeah. It's just, it's just not a school activity account anymore because they are not students in the school anymore.
Well, I believe, I think we need to address the, it says following graduation, the unexpected activity counts of the senior class will be transferred to another activities account as designated by the principal. And with district administrator approval. So that's saying that the principal and the district minister approves the activity account it goes into.
Which means it stays in school.
They're not taking that with them according to that. That's saying that the principal and district minister are going to decide where it goes to and what account. It doesn't even say the seniors have any choice in it.
Right.
And it used to be board upon board approval as well and that's removed. I'm just saying I, I have some concern with that. I mean.
It should just say that it goes to this.
You can add that to the policy. We can add that when it comes up, board approval and or addition to address the senior particular situation.
I'm just saying if they wanted to buy, like when they were doing pavers out there and they wanted a class of two thousand twenty-five to have one, that's not a district account. And so they wouldn't be able to do that, wouldn't be put in that.
And it should be.
Or if they were gonna, in honor of a past teacher or something, that, that's not a district account. They wanted to use that money to do that. That's not in there either. So.
Well, this is saying that it doesn't even go to them.
Well, correct. That's why I'd like to change that. And I, we don't have to do it tonight. We can move this forward.
Yeah, we move this forward and vote on it next month or next meeting. Keep those changes in mind, bring them up again. Any more discussion on what he brought up, Megan?
No, I just, I think if there's proposed language that we recommend, we can get that to Jesse and Dr. Asland if we, if, for that specific line, if there's like, if it's to. Class such and such, like we can work with that. Okay.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? If not, we have a consensus to move this to the board meeting?
Yes.
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 Item J, discuss Title Nine policy update, waiving the second reading. I sent, uh, you the information on that to review that prior to the meeting. It's quite lengthy. Um, the only change I can see is that how we handle teen pregnancies. That's pretty much new for the policy. But does anybody have any questions on Title Nine, the changes?
Um, I have quite a few, um, because it's, it's actually way more than just that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it says discrimination on the basis of sex includes discrimination on the basis of sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy. Or related conditions, sexual orientation and gender identity.
That was in the other policy too. The gender identity thing was.
These are being added.
Well, it was in the other policy in parentheses. Now it's, parentheses are deleted now. It's the only change.
Correct. But my concern is there's nine federal lawsuits right now out there, uh, up to almost twenty states now that have been fighting against this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's not just a simple change. Um, they're being held up in courts right now in Wisconsin as right now, no.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I, I've been on the phone with Alliance Defending Freedom this week. I was also with Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty. And there's a lot of changes happening just in the courts in the last couple of days. And I want to make it clear that I believe all of us here don't want to see any discrimination against any student or child. But what this policy is doing, um, is actually going against the purpose of Title Nine. And its original intent to protect women and give more rights for, for females. And so there's going to be liability on both sides. And possibilities on both sides. And so I would make a motion tonight that we table this. To allow some of the court stuff to be worked out before we make a rash decision.
Okay. Jerry?
So I hear what he's saying there, but if, if I understand it, doesn't it automatically get enacted on August first unless, unless it gets held?
Yeah, this is a time sensitive thing. So.
Well, it depends on if we approve it or not. I, I just got an email today to the school email. We got twenty-two pages, but. I don't think you realize that there's four hundred pages to this new edition that we haven't even read. And, and we're supposed to have no second reading and to me. That just puts this in a very precarious place that I'm not comfortable with going forward with it. I haven't had time to look at four hundred pages of whatever. We didn't get into the twenty-two pages.
It's, it's a new rule by bureaucrats. It's not passed by Congress. Um, in nineteen seventy-two, it was protected for females. This is a new rule and that is being fought in the courts right now. And so I think it's wise as a district not to. Put in policy, something within a month could be illegal and considered, uh, illegal. And that's what these lawsuits are about, saying this is not legal verbiage. And so I think it's wise for us just to slow down a little bit, table it and let some of that stuff get worked out.
I'm, I'm for tabling it.
So we have a motion on the table. We have a motion to table this particular item. Do we have a second on that?
I will second.
Any more discussion? Yes. Your, your name, please?
Heather Flyshower. I have two students in the district right now. If the policy that is proposed right now is abiding by current law. Is there any foul with adopting this now? And then if the courts do overturn it, it will automatically become null?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. So the, the seven, the seven states, the way I understand what I read, the seven states that have it in lawsuit right now. It would only apply if, if they win that, it only applies to those seven states. Because Wisconsin has not taken this up, uh, as a lawsuit. And so we would not, unless there's something else that I don't know about, but the ones that I was reading previously, if they, if they win, their states will win that case, which I believe. It, but ours, unless it's a total Supreme Court, from the way I understand it, I could be wrong, but that's how I read it.
So my question is the, the, what's on the table right now? If, uh, if you do accept that, is that in line with the current law right now?
No, it's.
Not in law, is in line with current law?
It's a new, it's a new rule that's being put in place.
I think so.
Bureaucrats.
This is, this is the Joe Biden's.
It's an executive order, I believe.
And so.
How did it get proposed through Neola? How did it get to your?
It's not Neola. This is federal.
It's a federal executive order. Then got, the way I understand it, and somebody can correct me, then goes to the state and that's why we're getting it last minute. We're getting twenty-two pages, not the four hundred pages condensed to make a ruling on whatever we all, or whoever gave us the twenty-two pages condensed. So we have no idea what's in the four hundred pages. Well, I don't because I didn't read for them.
It's just an executive order. So we don't have to.
None of us are lawyers up here. So this is our interpretation of that, just to be clear. So maybe they can call it a law. My concern as a board member and as a community member, there's liability on both sides of this. So if we do approve this, you might be following what some would consider law. But I think it opens up the door for liability on the other side to protect all people, all students, to protect the females in this building. I want to make sure that we protect them. And so this opens up the door for someone to ask to be in a bathroom. That goes different than their biological sex or a locker room or to participate in sports that goes against their biological sex. Again, this is being fought on both sides. It's in courts. So I say we just need to slow down as a district. We already have nondiscriminatory policies in place to protect our students. And I, I personally believe we should just table it and let the courts work it out at this time.
Yeah.
So there could be several months in the making.
Correct.
Is it possible to adopt it? And then if the courts rule otherwise, rescind it?
It is possible in both ways to do it. Correct. Yes.
Okay. So I asked the board to consider which way would be better. And I understand your, your rationale for proposing tabling it.
It's my understanding though, that if we, if we don't act on this at all, we, we currently have a Title Nine policy on the books that we, we would revert to.
Correct.
Um, so as far as this new policy change. The motion to table now is really out of order, but you can certainly table this at the next meeting when we actually take action on this. Tonight, we're not taking action on it. We're just talking about it. So it's good that you bring it up.
That's fine.
But if we have, the other way though, is if we have no consensus, it doesn't go move to the.
That's also true.
Okay.
Yeah. Any more discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And discussing not discriminating against someone who's pregnant, they're, they're taking it to where the district is supposed to provide place for lactation. Is there any place where the school brings, where allows for bringing infants to school?
Dr. Asland, you have any idea about that?
It's not that they bring the kids.
Come to the mic, please.
Please.
Bring the baby with them.
Okay.
But they're.
Yes.
Child to the school. It's the fact of giving a student who may have just given birth a, like a quiet place for them to.
Pump. Okay.
It's just. Just as if it was, just if, if they were an employee, you have to provide a space. Same thing, employees, dude, you have to provide a space. That's the law.
But I would think that we're doing that currently.
You are correct. Okay.
It's already being a complaint because we're not going to.
I was wondering how we handle babies at school. That was.
No babies at school, but, uh, but mothers have the ability to, to, to pump breast milk.
All right.
In a place that's private and hygienic.
All right. That sounds good to me.
Okay. Um, do we have a consensus to move this to the end of the month to actually take action? And at that point, you can either table it or pass it or, or fail it or whatever you wish to do. But in order to, to act on this, we need to move it along. So.
No.
What would you like to do?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
You probably need a vote.
No consensus to move it on. Okay.
I think you might want to just, I think.
We could do a roll call.
Do a roll call.
Okay. Roll call to see if there's consensus.
We will do a roll call for a consensus to move this to action at the end of the month. Jesse, could you call a roll, please?
No.
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 Yes.
Yes.
The nose habit. So it dies right here apparently. So we're still, uh. We do have a Title Nine policy on the books right now. That's the one we were going with for now unless something changes in the future here. Item K, discuss Wasby Report, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four report. Everybody get a chance to read that? Any questions on it? Any discussion that you wish to have? Hearing none. Do we have consensus to move this on to the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. We'll move it on. Item L, thirty, sixty, ninety day planners, receive and place on file. If nobody has any problems with it, has everybody looked at it?
Yeah.
Yes.
We will receive that and place that on file. Item M, financial update. Dr. Asland?
So, uh, financial update for the month of May, twenty twenty-four. Income of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, coming largely from aid claims and matches. Expenditures, one million, five hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents. Cash on hand at the end of May, twenty twenty-four, five million, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. And to contrast that with May from twenty twenty-three, the cash on hand then was four million, nine hundred and three thousand, eighty-five dollars and forty-two cents.
Questions? Hearing none. We'll place that on file. Item N, approval of vouchers. Dr. Asland?
Just if there's consent, consensus to move that forward to.
I think you need to consent to move the other one forward to the board meeting.
We did, didn't we?
No.
Do we have consensus to move the financial report to the board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Approval of vouchers. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. That concludes the open session of the meeting. Do I have a motion here to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We'll be going into closed session as of now.
It is now seven oh three that we are in open session and no action was taken in closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion on adjournment?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no.